It's seven o'clock, folks, and we'll call this meeting to an end. Stand for the pledge, if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. We'll do the meeting with R.C. Flyers, so you guys don't have to hang around all day long.
Appreciate that. Evening, everyone. My name is Michael Murphy. I'm the current club president of R.C. Flyers. This is Brian Reed, who was a past president for 12 years, and was here at the onset of the club, pretty much, and Jim Rotundo, our treasurer. We would like to thank the select board for letting us use the property allowing the Rutland County Flyers to use the field for the past year. And I'd like to give you a bit of history, including some club efforts to support the town. The Town Fair Haven has been very gracious in allowing the Rutland County Flyers to utilize the airport to fly our model aircraft for over 30 years now. We understand it is a privilege and are very appreciative. We try to keep our footprint as small as possible and to not interfere with others using the area. We also try to be good caretakers of the property and support the town wherever we can. Back in 2008, the club president offered to make a donation to fund payable to the Town Fair Haven, but the town declined the offer. Over the years, the club has donated over $8,000 to nonprofit organizations, as well as directly to specific town departments. Currently, we typically donate $500 a year to Fair Haven Concerns, and additional $250 on a rotating basis to either the police department, federal department, ambulance service, or Public Works. In addition, we sponsor the concerts in the park by supplying and serving ice cream cones at one of the concerts every season. And our annual funfly in July attracts a lot of pilots and spectators that can translate into additional income to town businesses. Lastly, a large group of members also support the Fair Haven American Legion by attending their Sunday morning breakfasts once a month. I'd like to ask permission, the club would like to ask permission, to fly at the field again in 2023. We are asking earlier than usual this year because the FAA has a new regulation that is requiring model aircraft flying sites to be registered. There's some time involved with getting this accomplished, so we need to have an answer before we start the application. And of course, we're asking permission for our usual funfly in July, the second week of July. And we'd like to request permission this year to place a porta potty on town property for the flying season. The club is made up of many older members, including women and younger kids that would benefit from having a lavatory located on the site. The club will pay all costs associated with the rental and regular maintenance of the unit, and the porta potty would remain unlocked and could be used by not just our members, but also by any visitor to the town property wishing to use it. And the club is also curious, they're out there flying, and they see people soil testing, so we've noticed that the soil testing was being performed on many occasions while we're at the field this summer. We would like to know if there are any plans for development in the future that would require us to relocate. We are hopeful that we can remain in Fair Haven for many years to come, but should that not be your wishes, we ask for as much lead time as possible because it's very difficult to find another flying site that can support the recreational activity that we love so much. And finally, if the town would prefer to have club donations distributed differently, we'd very much like to know that. And that's the whole spiel.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or anybody? First question I have, with the new regulations, are there going to be any different insurance requirements? Do you know of?
No.
Okay, because that would be important.
What they want to do is, they want to put a locator device on every airplane, unless you have a designated flying site. Then you would not need that locator on your aircraft because it's a designated flying site and you're supposed to be flying there. But anybody else flying anywhere would have to have an actual thing on their aircraft, whether it be a drone, a model airplane, helicopter. And then, so we're trying to get that site designated as a flying site, so we won't have to do that.
Are there any restrictions that would affect the rest of the town, the town's people?
Not that I'm aware of, sir, no.
That would be, if you find out, we need to know that.
Absolutely.
That's very important. And I appreciate you guys trying to, you know, maintain good relations with everybody else that's up there. The other thing that, there is, on private property north, there is some hope of development up there, a solar field of some sort. But that's not on our property, and that's north above. So the soil testing, is that just for maybe wetland things or something?
Yeah, we're getting the airport, the wetlands reassessed on the airport.
The only thing I want to see is that you maintain just the two days, like what we talked about before. Because I don't think you should have open, you know, just any time you want to go in and out. I don't think that should be. I think we talked about that before. I think the last time you were here, I think it was like Tuesdays or Sundays or something like that.
Actually, three days, Tuesday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay, because it's just, I don't think you should just have, you know, free run at the airport.
Yeah, that's what we plan to do, in just three days a week. And we don't want to overstay our welcome by any means.
Any other questions or comments?
This is our chance to meet with the guys.
I just got one thing. I stopped up there this summer and watched the program for a while. I'm very impressed with that. Looked like a lot of fun. It's pretty good entertainment. And I'm sure they would like to see more people come up and watch them. So, if that could happen.
And entertain, I think we should probably have a motion saying we're going to let them do, do what they do.
With the stipulation, I'll make a motion, but with the stipulation that we find out what the new regulations are, if there's anything that's going to affect the town in any way.
Everybody understand that? I mean, we're talking about three days a week, we're talking about...
Funfly in July.
Funfly in July. And that usually involves some campers.
Yes.
Which is, and the porta potty, which is new.
Yeah, we want to have that for the flying season now because we're starting to get a lot of female members, and we're getting a lot of younger kids now. It'd be nice to have a porta potty out there if it's sorry with you guys.
I don't think that's a problem, is it?
I don't, yeah.
Better than the alternative.
Better than where you were anyways, I would think, right?
Yeah, yeah, be right there at the center.
You're down by that building that you've got down there.
I would say it's a must.
Well, yeah, I mean, there is, there is a bathroom down at the pavilion, but is that open all the time or not?
It's open in the sun.
Yeah, so.
It's open several times, and it's been locked every time we've tried to use it, so.
So that makes more sense. Everybody understand that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, gentlemen.
You guys have been good citizens, it's great to have you. You've really, you know, and there is a little bit of a benefit to the town financially, so we appreciate you. You've been good neighbors.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for being the first, we appreciate it.
Well, the rest of this is going to be really exciting, you can stay. Amendments to the agenda. Approval of minutes of November 1st. I don't have one here, you guys are going to have to pick up the slide.
Motion to approve the minutes with the correction of my name spelling throughout. Content-wise, it's good, though. Just a few of my name.
Really?
There's a T instead of an R. I certainly forget my name, though.
My apologies.
No, no, that's quite all right. Second. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm voting, so there's three of us voting aye. Jay's a saint. Okay, five minutes for public comment.
Good evening, gentlemen. I am here on behalf of myself and my family to address the select board and emphasize it is the members of the board who are the governing body of the town that are vested by statute with authority and decision-making. I respectfully remind the board that during a few recent select board meetings, there were public statements made by town manager Joe Gunter, chairperson Bob Richards, Jay Brown, and Rich Greenow that my family owes back taxes. These statements are memorialized on PEG TV and in the written word in the Fair Haven Minutes. Tonight, in response to these publicly made statements by the town manager and members of the select board, I would like to present, I would like to present to chairperson Bob Richards an attorney's escrow check in the amount of $10,500 payable to the Town of Fair Haven as a good faith initial payment.
No, I'm not going to accept that. That's not the way we do business here, thank you.
Being an escrow...
We do this through official channels, and that's not official.
Being an escrow check, these funds are real, having already been deposited in our attorney's escrow account. I would like to now introduce our attorney, attorney John Mizuki, who will be contacting town attorney Kevin Kite to further these discussions in the near future. It is respectfully requested by and through this $10,500 escrow check presented here tonight in response to the public statements of board members and town manager that my family owes back taxes that our good faith will initiate dialogue between and among the attorneys, and most importantly, as stated earlier, the clients, the members of the board who have the authority to make decisions. With these discussions, it is hoped the board gains knowledge and insight and will not foreclose any consideration of options. Whereas this matter is not going to be realistically resolved tonight, between tonight and the next select board meeting, and whereas there is a November 23rd, next Wednesday, deadline for us to remove our personal possessions from 5 and 7 Union Street, we respectfully request the attorneys be given the opportunity to discuss this matter, discuss with their clients, and the removal date be postponed, allowing for discussion, alternatives, and options to be considered by everyone.
This matter's in court, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to accept that check. You can take the check, you can talk to our attorneys, and, if you want, but I think we're in court, so I think we're beyond good faith efforts. So, you sold the money, it's been adjudicated many times, we're still in court, we're not, we've spent more than $10,000 on legal fees, that's for sure. But bottom line is, go through the channels. The channels are with the courts and the attorneys, not with us. We can't make any decisions that are above and beyond, or beyond the court's authority, and we're not going to do that. So that, I'm not going to take that check.
Okay, now, I respect that. But I would like to leave with you is a letter from, signed by my attorney, that I copied, indicating that the check does exist. And as I said, the proper channels, my attorney, attorney Mizuki, will be in touch with attorney Kite to discuss this matter.
Thank you.
Should I leave one for Mr. Travis? Sorry.
I'll stick it in his mailbox.
And so, would you like me to take this check back?
Give it to your lawyer and let them dance around with it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Jake?
Hey, guys.
How are you doing?
Resident and business owner, and it's been a while since I've been to a meeting. You guys have done a great job. I check in with Joe often for certain things, but I've been trying to do this for a couple of years, I just haven't had the help. And my business is going to sponsor a Christmas decorating contest for the town this year. I didn't know if this was all right, come in and maybe kind of advertise it a little bit. And I finally have a secretary, and she's going to be able to pretty much run the whole thing. Hopefully, it's not going to include too much work, but it'll be a $500 first prize for best decorated house. And I think, she's got all the info, but I think it's like the 18th of December. I think there's like a week there, maybe it's like the week before Christmas, we're going to be doing all the judging. And if anybody needs information or like to register for it, you got to contact Betsy, B D S T Y at V T Roof Solutions dot com. So, that's the plan. Hopefully, it grows. This is the first year, and if there's a lot of interest, hopefully we'll continue going. So, anything to improve the town, you know, so. But that's all I got.
Well, thanks. Put that on the website.
We can. Yeah, well, she's dropped off flyers and things, and it's just starting to gain a little traction, but I thought, I saw the lights on, and I said, why not come in and talk to you? I need to spread the word a little bit more, so.
We gotta work on those lights thing. People sneak in all the time, I worry. Thanks, Jake.
It's my understanding that they're going to start decorating the park Sunday, I think.
Oh, really?
So, just so you know.
You mean you're decorating it?
By the way, you mean to...
Frankie DeBlau.
Frankie Kansas. Got something going on Sunday.
Golf, no, not golf. Probably. Okay, department head reports, I see one department head here.
Evening. Highway end, little blackouts in. As of even last meeting, we were able to snake this, yeah, snake this state into, lines straightened in Scottsdale before they put the truck away for winter, so that has its W L line, so that's all good there. The guy's got the drain tied in down on South Main, so hopefully we prevent water infiltration into our road base and keep that road together this winter. Green Road, they were able to fix that culvert patch that we had. It was a bit of a speed bump, it's now a smoother transition, so hopefully it'll leave the plows in better shape. Plows are, the ones that could be mounted are mounted on trucks. Trucks are loaded for salt and ready for our first test run. Hopefully, it goes fairly smooth for everybody involved.
Hopefully, you don't need them.
Hopefully, we don't need them, but we're ready for it. So, the first one's always a good test run, so if it's going to be a nice easy one, that'd be better than a big shot like we did around here and stuff. Guys have been working getting equipment all prepped for winter as well, starting for summer stuff away. All the summer seasonal help is now gone as of this pay period. Joe stayed in extra pay period to help get leaves picked up around the park as best as possible, West Street and stuff like that. So, hopefully after this storm comes through, it'll clear off one more time, we can do some curbing stuff. I know we didn't get all the leaves off the curbs yet, so that's, hopefully in the next week or so. Water department, the guys have the tanks all the way out. They're working on coring new holes for the new chem feed tanks for their fill lines and vent lines. The vent line is required to be bittered now, so of course they have to open up the openings for that vent pipe to be a little bitter going out. Still looking at the end of this month delivery date for tanks, so hopefully soon enough, we'll attract a chair with some tanks sitting up there, build, start installing them. We did have an engineer come down, take a little look around and see where we're at on the electrical upgrade that we're looking to try and come up with up there as a second part of the chem tank upgrade. One of the ghost issue, or not ghost issues, but signal issues we were having, the engineer again said, probably should just straighten that out first and just get the system running like it should, that's currently there, and then take the whole scope, look at everything. So we did have a field technician out last week, he's back out tomorrow to try and straighten out some of the signals that feed the chemical feed pumps, so that way the chlorine and caustic soda are actually being based off of the flow coming through the plant and not some wonky signal that was walking around some of the electrical there. They did find an issue and have a temp fixed tomorrow. It's hopefully a more permanent solution to get that, so it's running smoothly instead of a constant wave of up and down. Waste water plant, we had our first quarter review with the engineering firm to make sure that the plant is operating as they had designed it to. It's meeting its permit requirements, as well as what they're expecting for the plant to do with the new, the new way it's put together. Of course, it's doing way better than, it's doing very, very well. Not way better than what they anticipated, but it's doing very, very well. So, they're still very impressed with how Carrie is handling the plant. The one engineer stated the way she's running is, the way she's operating the system is watching how the system operates, not just looking at results and tinkering. She's actually looking at the bugs inside the system and how the chemicals are reacting with everything, and actually going through the whole process and not just watching the end result and adjusting up for that. She's watching the whole process all the way through and trying to do it as best we can. We did have, or I had a phone call with Efficiency Vermont for trying to finish out the electrical upgrade stuff that was there. Efficiency Vermont is going to look, is looking through all of it to see how much reduction of power and how much more efficiently the plant's operating and give us possibly a break on, or some money back towards what our savings were with the upgrades. So, I'm going to get with him a little bit more detail. He did look at our numbers, and Carrie has been looking at the numbers for electrical use, and she's, they're both very happy with how much less power we think we're already using with the new VFDs on some of that, the new aeration system. So, hopefully I have some more firm numbers here.
Is that a separate meter? I mean, that...
Just one meter for the whole plant down there.
Yeah.
So it comes in the back, so that's, there's a little, not discrepancy, but Carrie and the Efficiency Vermont guy were looking. It was used to be the old meter in service, and we got a new whole service with this upgrade. And they're comparing, trying to compare notes and trying to make sure that there wasn't just something missing somewhere because it looks like the savings are fairly significant at this point. So, we're only a few months, six months into probably running on that one meter alone, so it'll be more C as we go through the season, so. Other than that, that's not enough for the moment.
Is Nate involved with that review of the, or is it just the engineer?
Just any. I think it's just, for them, it's more reviewing to make sure, I think I was talking with Carrie about it, to make sure that the plant's operating the way they designed it to. So if we're missing milestones of what it should be able to do, we can go back to them, or they can look at what they did and make some modifications to the design to make sure it's fulfilling its permit requirements, so. And it is, so.
Questions, comments? I have four.
What's, why isn't the ditching, or why isn't the shoulders finished on Swamp Road?
Haven't got there yet.
Well, there's that one up on the corner. If a snowball drops in there, we're going to have a truck off the road. Because, I mean, it's crazy that we didn't have this done. I mean, you had all summer to do it. I know you've been busy, but that was supposed to have been one of the agendas, to have it done and taken care of. I'm not happy because the town paid to hook that drain up, up on South Side. He brought that water to the road. It wasn't something the town had done. He piped it right from out back, right to the edge of the road, and I feel he should have been paying for part of that, hooking that up. I don't think it's right that we're putting the bill for it. And Scottsdale, I took a ride up there, I thought the pavement that was done, they did a nice job. But why didn't we just find money somewhere and put an extra load on to take that down so it matched the other side of the road? It's so rough up there, where you come off that nice new pavement.
Actually, you went an extra load or two anyway, as it was, man.
Well, they should have at least evened it out or something because it's, I think it's, the roughness is still there, as far as I'm concerned. And it's, with the brush not being cut, we're not accomplishing nothing up there because the road isn't going to dry out, the road isn't going to get the sun on it the way it should. So, you know, that's just one more thing. And then, the other thing I got is, when we did the cracks here, why didn't we do the hill on Main Street?
The hill on Main Street?
Yes.
We didn't do it, and it's destined to be paved in '24.
Yeah, and the road's going to fall apart. The road, it's already gotten wider this summer, those cracks.
Didn't have enough time to get to that, ended up needing a boulder with them too, not enough time.
Well, yeah, I think that should have been taken care of, one way or the other, or you should have had the state in there doing it.
Isn't part of that main hill going to be dug up next year for that sewer project?
So, the water line would be possibly somewhere in '24.
Before they pave, right?
Yeah, and paving is, right now, looking at '25.
And the other thing, are we still on a 10-hour day?
No. We've been, we've been back to eight-hour days as of October 1st, it was.
Okay. That's all I got, I guess.
Yes?
I got one thing. When you, when you put that line in up there, was there quite a bit of water in there?
When I was up there, the hole was wet. They didn't say anything about it being ridiculously wet, but I could see where around their pipe, where they were going to make the connection to the pipe, there was water seeping around, at least the outside of the pipe, if anything else. So, but I didn't see any, it wasn't heavy, heavy wet, but we could definitely tell. And the way, when they had to dig down to get to the end of the pipes, the ground, there was a sinkhole forming around all that stuff, so that means there's plenty of water moving through there, but it's taking dirt with it, so.
Is that a perforated pipe, or is that a solid pipe he put in?
This pipe was perforated.
So, what, we're not gaining nothing. He put stone all around it, so the water's not even going to get to the, it's going to still be seeping out into the area.
The perforated pipe will collect the water and water...
The water, the waters.
Water coming down the pipe, it's going to come out.
Yeah, but it should prevent it from seeping into our roadbed and causing our brown.
Well, but the point is, he brought the water to the road. That's the point I'm trying to make.
I'm not a hundred percent sure that's totally true because the water runs downhill.
I know, but he brought that water to the road. His permit required him to hook up to our stormwater system, and he didn't do that.
And then that's, see about a billion procedure here. I mean, if it is, we shouldn't subsidize.
Bad work.
That's Mr.?
Brothers.
Yes, Mr. Brothers. Bill Brothers.
No.
No, Rob won?
Mike.
Oh, Mike, yeah, 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 yeah.
Where'd he go? I don't know.
Just came from over here. Interesting. Okay, anything else?
I, this is, I think this is more for Joe than it is for you, but it is something to do with runoff. Over here at the big house on the corner by the park, across the road where the Good Doctor lives, I can't even think what his name is.
Over here on the other end of the park.
He said that, he was, he told me that he had an engineer come in and look at it and everything else, and stuff was given to you, and nothing's been done about it.
About the runoff behind his house?
Because it's, it's taking his property away.
That's not, that's not the case.
I don't know. I mean, I have never seen any, I haven't seen anything that was he presented or anything.
So, so there's a, there is a catch basin that catches stormwater and puts it out to the. Uh, back behind his house where the, the hills kinda come together like this. Um, the way he described it is that the, the hills were like this. And then all that stormwater eroded all the hills. So now they're like this and there's a, which is obviously not the case.
Does that pipe end flush on, or does it extend all the ways?
Uh, it's, it's pretty flush. There's, looks like somebody had lined that ditch with stone years and years ago.
Is there any chance that, that we just put an extension on it to length?
Uh, it's not.
Uh, I'm just, I'm just asking a solution. I, I, you know.
There's, uh, I went up and looked at it and Aaron went out. I think, you and I go out together? There's not a problem to solve here. Uh, it's been stone lined and there's really no erosion. Uh, he's got some dead trees in the area that he's blaming on us, but it's not.
Yeah, well, cause he, yeah, I'm just bringing up, he cornered me about it and I said I hadn't seen anything on the report, you know, that he claims he gave us.
Yeah.
Um, and if there's a problem, we look at it. If there isn't a problem, we don't.
No, it's, uh, we looked at this a couple of years back and it's, uh, this, it's on the state's radar. Um, that's something that they may be dealing with, but it's not something the town is doing.
Well, could we just, like, maybe go back and look at it again just for. You know, that we haven't forgotten about it. You know what I'm saying?
What?
We don't have to make a big issue out of it, just.
What's the state looking at just to wa, runoff to the river?
Yeah, they, they went through and did an inventory of all of our catch basins and that was one of them that they thought they might be able to, uh, improve. To rehab.
So have you had, have you heard anything from the state on that?
Uh, no, this is that program that you and I are part of.
Oh, okay.
Um, they've been having a hard time getting, getting their kinda duck, uh, ducks in a row to actually get the money out the door.
Yeah, that actually.
So there is something that's.
There's actually something that, now that you bring that up, that, that, that's a perfect um. Uh, solution for that because they have uh, all kinds of money if they ever get it figured out how they're gonna.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up because like I said, I was cornered with it the other day and.
What do they, what's the state planning on doing there?
They have a lot of, um, this, this particular um, committee slash board, I guess it's a board really. It's to do with, um, it's to do with runoff into, into Champlain. So any, any, there's a lot of private, um, private public, um, projects that can, can be involved. I'll. I'll bring in some stuff that I have on it and see what they've got, but. What, what I've been trying to get out of them is how do we go about, what is the scope? What do we, what can we do? And how do we go about applying for it? And they haven't even gotten to the point. They haven't even gotten to the point of, of finishing the bylaws. And, and knowing how the state's gonna disperse the money yet. But they want all these committees all over the state to be ready to go as soon as they're ready. So shovel-ready project like something like that would be perfect. And you know, they've got, they've got some money. Got some money to play with and it's federal money and state money combined. But how it's gonna be dispersed and.
It went.
It went and uh, right now it's mired in some serious bureaucracy, but we're, we're meeting. Once a quarter at this point.
Okay.
But that would be, I didn't even think of that. That'd be a great, that'd be a great project for that. You're up?
I'm up.
You got.
Okay, so in.
You alright? You're not, well, Californian it up there or anything?
Yeah, you know, feeling great. I was, uh, I was, I should have come back like three days earlier is what it was. I was getting bored out of my mind. Um, so in front of the board, there was a, uh, an update from the Lake Bomazine about the Lake Bomazine Association, um, application for herbicide. Um, and then. Linda Quinn called me this afternoon, wanted me to know about this and was hoping that I could, uh, provide the board with this update. So her email is attached and then the, uh, update on that. Is also there. Uh, from my office, uh, so the school, uh, the school got to choose, do, uh, got to choose a name for one of the state's snowplows. Yeah, it's called the Falcon Blizzard, which is cool.
The Falcon Blizzard?
Blizzard, yeah.
Oh, great.
Yeah. Um, second week, so I got in touch with the, the auditor. Um, second week of December is, the audit's gonna be completed. He scheduled his meeting with the Board of Selectmen on twelve twenty-seven. Um, it's a little later than usual, but uh, he, like so many people, he's short-staffed. So Ron, uh, Ron is taking over the audit himself and he's gonna do it. We posted again on Facebook and Front Porch Forum, we desperately need a recreation director, uh, to run the baseball and the, uh, summer program. Also desperately need some, some folks to help with our parade. Uh, I've had a few volunteers, uh, raise their hand, say they'll help with the parade, but they don't wanna be the ones to run it. So, um, in the past, the Legion was running it, uh, and last I heard they were not. So, but I have heard contrary to that today. We'll see what happens.
I, I have to sit down and ask that question straight up at the next meeting in December. Um, cause I'm not sure, it's always been their bailiwick and we've, we've helped. Um, and I'm not sure exactly why that's fallen through. Um, so I will, I'll have some sort of answer.
Cause we, we have volunteers that wanna, wanna help, but they just, you know, they don't have time to manage the whole thing.
That may be the case. Um, you know, Sean Galvin was involved. And was, and ran it, but he's doing a lot of storm work and stuff all over the country. So. He doesn't, probably doesn't have the time, but I'm, I just don't think it should leave the Legion and I'll make that. Make that, uh. Plea at the next meeting.
So, uh, I got word from D and K, the draft contract and the final documents are with the state now. Uh, we should be able to get that up to bid sometime, the park and ride and the lights in the park. That contract and all the draft documents are with the state for final approval. Uh, we should be able to get that up to bid, uh, December. Uh, with bids coming in in January for early spring construction. Um, the goal is to get the lights in the park done first so that way it's ready for the summer, uh, concert programs. And then they'll, they'll do the parking lot after that. Website development continues. Our, our developer was actually in Florida and the tornado went through her neighborhood. So she still has a place to live, but she is struggling to get that done.
Who says?
Our website developer.
Okay.
Um, she's also found, so there's, uh, we're developing new dot gov, uh, email addresses. So we're gonna get rid of like the, uh, like joe@fairhaven, or joe@fairhaven. Joe@comcast.com. It's gonna be an actual town manager@fairhavenvermont.gov, something that looks legitimate instead of something that. Looks like spam. Uh, talking about solar, the solar project on our, uh, at the transfer station, that comes online twelve thirty of this year. Yeah, so those, those online payments, what did we say? There were eleven thousand dollars annually, seven. Whatever the, whatever that payment is, that'll start in, in January. We, we also bought into that reduced cost electricity from these group, from this group two years ago. So we'll start to see electricity credits added to our, um, our electric bill. So we should see some, some savings there in our budget. How much? I don't know. Uh, we'll have to see what that looks like as it starts rolling through.
It's like fifteen percent or something off. Is that, that's kinda the standard?
I can't remember. For some reason, eight percent comes to mind, but. Yeah, fifteens percent's better.
Well, it's better than a sick in the eye either way, but.
Um, and I had a complaint, uh, on Benson Avenue. Somebody sent me a letter that, in fact, the whole block sent me a letter that was signed by them. About rats and garbage on Benson Avenue.
Benson Lane?
Uh, Benson Lane. Uh, John, the new health officer, uh, he went and took a look at that and he has a report for that. So. Um, apparently those folks are cleaning up that lot as we speak, just in case it, it bubbles up. And that is all I got for you today.
Can also get hold of the Vermont Land Trust right off, you know, they own that.
Oh, do they? I didn't know that.
The trailer park, yeah. Yeah, I think it was, that was Benson Lane though, wasn't it? They brought the complaint. It was on the other side.
Second, second house in on the right, our trailer.
I drove up there. I didn't see a real issue.
Oh, you didn't?
There was a bunch of, uh, wooden debris. Looks like they were getting ready to cart it away, but I didn't really see any garbage.
I went by today and it looked like they were, like you said, it looked like they were starting to move stuff out. So. No, doesn't, looks like it's not an issue at this point.
That's it?
That's it.
Questions for Joseph? Okay. One, quick one. Whatever happened to our engine brake signs that we talked about putting up last spring?
I don't know. I'll send Jimmy an email and see what happened. I don't, I know they haven't been up because I've been back and forth. So I'll, uh, I'll reach out and see where they're at.
Wherever you got it, Rob, yeah.
Coming in on twenty-two, uh, out of White Hall, or out of New York State, coming in on Washington Street. Coming down Scotch Hill, and I think there was one they talked about on Route four-eight. So.
Down here by the hill, forgot about that.
I just, if you do put them up, I just hope they're big enough so they can see them.
Yeah, let me reach out, we'll see.
Okay. Last chance.
I have one quick question. Where are we at with this elevator project as far as getting things tight? Things, as far as getting things tidied back up here for winter, we're gonna be starting to lose quite a lot of heat out the door.
Yeah, so the project end, uh, project manager Sean is coming in tomorrow with his electricians. I'm gonna ask him to button up those holes over here. In the ceiling because I'm getting kind of a cold draft coming out of there. Um, we're still waiting for, it, the only thing holding us up are two, two circuit breakers.
Why can't they put the, put it together? I mean, they could put the doors and stuff on those.
Yeah, I understand why the doors can't be, and the windows can't be taken care of and.
I asked the same.
Don't understand any of that.
I asked the same question. I said, well, why can't we do the, the regular, like the work for the, like the town clerk window? Uh, the doors, the windows. And he said, everything hinges on that elevator. So.
Yeah, but I mean, he could put that elevator together. Just cause they're two brak, uh.
Breakers short.
Put the elevator together.
Otis says they refuse, uh, so Otis is the only one that will do it and they refuse to put it together until everything is in place.
We're giving us no job here. I hate to be uncut out. Like Rick just said, the heat's going up through there. Our furnace is on here and it's a wide open hole.
Yeah, I see no reason why the woodwork can't be done in the surrounding area. I can understand maybe the elevator in the shaft and whatnot. They may not wanna do any of that, but. Yeah, the outskirts of it, I just can't, I, I don't buy that. I'm sorry.
Our heat go triple unless they button this up and close up that shaft.
Yeah, he's coming tomorrow. We're gonna get some plastic up here to keep that heat in.
Joey, they gotta do something other than plastic.
That it? Uh, GMP Eastman, what's going on with that?
Nothing. I put that there just because I didn't know if the board would sign it last time, uh, and I didn't wanna, uh, miss an opportunity this time. But you guys signed that last, uh, last meeting.
I was surprised to see where they're putting those panels. It was my understanding those panels were supposed to go on top of the old dump. Not.
Over.
Up here, up, up here at the landfill.
Not where they got them.
That's not where the old dump was. The old dump was up on top or, I think you guys were up there working, leveling it out and stuff. I thought that's where they were supposed to go.
You pretty much got the whole area covered, though.
It, it expands out a little further than the top of the dump, but.
That's why they took trees.
Yeah, they had to take some trees down.
I'd be worried a little bit. Well. They're on the, they're on the, the part we cased in with the, with the clay and everything. They're not all the way over though.
That's where I thought they were supposed to go. I thought they were supposed to go on top of that, but we lost a lot of good area for expansion if we were wanting to do something with the dump. That's the sad part. Whatever.
That was a, a different board and a little hard to, hard to second guess them, I think, at this point. Uh, no new business, budget review. So we're doing Danny's stuff. If I can find it. Elections unit is first. Do you wanna?
That's what I asked for, um, exactly what I asked for. We only have hopefully one, um, election next year, hopefully. Um, I budgeted, yes, I budgeted, um, for two, just in case, um, the town goes, if the school goes down, the school pays for it. But if we go down, we pay for it. Also in there, as I, um, asked at the DCA hearing and didn't get any objections, I threw a little money in there to feed. To feed us, um, although the Legion was very kind and fed us enough that we, I didn't have to dig into my pocket to cover dinner. Um, and I think that's a sufficient amount. I added in for what is the raise in minimum wage. Uh, we have to now have somebody right next to the tabulator so that kind of adds another, sometimes you'll add another person to the list. Um, the tabulator can't be left alone.
How'd it go this time? It seemed.
It was okay. Uh, the first guy that came through thought he'd give me a little attitude and discovered that I didn't take it well and he shut him down. And he's like, okay, fine. And that was it. They were a couple, you know, there's always a couple. Um, somebody came in, brought in their ballot with, I choose not to vote on it. And I thought, and the envelope, I think, okay. I guess it was supposed to be a statement, but. No, it wasn't. It was busy. I will say there was spurts and it was quite busy. We had five hundred and twenty absentee ballots. Which, some of them being delivered there, which was a lot of absentee ballots.
How many?
Five hundred and twenty. I, um, bought this spring and I was glad I did a fireproof soft case and that's what I had the ballots in. Um, and I just thought with my luck, you know, my car will catch fire on the way to the poles or whatever. I just wanted it to have something more secure than, than just a cardboard box. And also it's stuck out to, to us as not just being garbage behind the, behind the, uh, the lines. But it was fault. It was heavy. So it was, it was, it was all right. I don't know what March will bring, but I don't think it'll be as bad as this one was anticipating certainly. We've got a lot of, as you know, because I checked the board, um, DCA pretty up to date. I'm sure you got sick of me, but just so you knew what was going on with, um. Threats and that we were getting down from the state. And I don't know of anybody who had, although I, I did have, um, another, uh, town clerk as we were discussing it afterwards. A couple said it was a pretty rough. Pretty rough in their towns, but I didn't have anything that I, made me nervous. So I don't have any complaints about the election that wasn't touched.
Questions, comments on the elections?
No, I was going pretty much. I stopped down just to see what. I stopped down just to see what was happening. Everything looked great to me.
We have a good, a good group of poll workers. Very good. The um, uh with very little trouble, the numbers came out, you know, but the number of people I said voted, you know, actually did vote. I didn't have any discrepancies. Took me a little bit of back and forth between the books to come out right, but it, it wasn't bad and so we didn't have any trouble there.
Large number?
Uh nine hundred and eighty-eight. So, yeah, for us.
That's a lot.
Yeah, for us it was a, it was a pretty good turnout.
What are the electoral voters in the period?
Uh as of election morning, it was one thousand eight hundred fifty-two.
So you had fifty percent or better?
Yeah, yeah. I do have um a, a good sized case of ballots that were returned. You know, very transient people who move, but I probably have forty or so and I think that's a lot, so. They're in, I have to put those into the system as being undeliverable because they have to be accounted for. But those are people that we're gonna have to challenge and we'll try and get them off the.
Do you, do you feel it's better by the state sending these ballots out or didn't?
Do you want, do you want an honest answer, Jay? No.
That's what I thought too. I thought it made it a lot harder for you there because if somebody walked in and didn't have the ballot that was mailed to them, they had to fill a paper out.
You have to fill out an affidavit.
Yeah, and I just thought that was very time consuming, I thought.
Well, it's an extra person, for sure.
It's an extra person and honestly, um with all of that going in and out, there were literally days that I would spend two or three hours just on elections. Now that's two or three hours that I'm not getting anything else done.
And they, and they came out so early.
Oh, yeah, no one had them.
And you gotta, you gotta get them someplace to remember where they are in the first place. I mean, that's all people don't always remember things. But, you know, I just felt it was, it's a lot harder.
I understood it, I guess during COVID, but, and it annoys a heck of a lot of people. It really does. And the expense, the expense of sending all these letters, all these, you know, and they're not, they're not light. It costs more. And then postage, they're post-paid, so when they go back through, it costs the state. Um and I've got to find out, I probably have not a lot, twenty or maybe twenty, that I had to send out because people kept um they were registering to vote in between after it was sent, um and so the state will reimburse us for those. But it wasn't, it's an awful lot of work, especially in a small town when there's, I mean, it's basically just me and it's, it's an awful lot of work. A lot, it's a lot of moving parts to it. It's not just, I get it. I have to get it. I have to log it into the system. I only have so many days to get all of that done, then I have to put it in a secure place.
If the ballots all came to you and you handed them out at election, it'd be so much easier.
Yeah, I mean, like we always do. I, and I don't mind, um actually, absentee voting is great. I have no problem with that. But then it's only the people who want the ballot that are getting it and not everybody. And a lot of people said, oh, I didn't know I was supposed to bring them. I didn't know that's what it was for. And then there are the people who think that there somehow it's encoded with something or god, even people who think that there's something in the ink, when, not so much in Fairhaven, but I, I heard that from other towns that they, people wouldn't use the correct pens that are supposed to dry faster because they thought there was something in the ink. I, well, I, I don't know if they thought it would change their vote from Republican to Democrat or vice versa. I have no clue.
Erasable ink.
Huh?
Vanishing ink.
Yeah, kind of. I have no clue. I have no clue. But it, it is a, it's a tremendous amount of, of work that's piled on the towns that the towns are paying for, which is really state, you know, it's a state business. But it went, it went very well. I mean, it was my fourth this year. I'm kinda getting, you know, quicker at it.
We're okay there. Go to town clerk. I think that's the next one, right? Yep.
Well, Joe gave me a lovely nine hundred and fifty dollar raise for my base of last year, which I was told at the time was based on someone who I know experienced in the job. So, as we all know, I've been the assistant clerk for twelve years. I've now been the clerk for eight years, eight years, seems like eight years, eight months. Um I think I personally have done a darn good job. I've had a lot of compliments. I've had a lot of people stopping in, wanna know how I'm doing, if everything is going well for me, if I've been treated okay. This is kind of where town clerks are in pay, um what I've asked for. Um and I, and I did in this letter, I sat down and, and said to you folks that I annualized what I have received, starting in March, but calling it for the whole year because I did have Suzanne's pay for four months, which helped boost me up. But um going into twenty-three, and I'm just looking at this as how I'm paying taxes nineteen, or twenty-twenty-two versus twenty-twenty-three, in twenty-twenty-three, I will lose six point seven two percent.
Say that again, please.
Okay, so in twenty-twenty-two, if I just pretend I've worked the whole year and take what I, I've got for pay because um March, April, May and June, I had Suzanne's much higher salary because that belonged to me as town clerk. And then I took the, a really good chunk of change lost after that. So in twenty-twenty-two, my gross pay will be forty thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars. In twenty-twenty-three, if we go with um Joe's figures, it's thirty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, a decrease of two thousand seven hundred dollars and fifty cents, or a pay cut of six point seven two percent.
But it's not fair to, to use uh, use Suzanne's salary as.
I, but that was, I'm just, those four months is what I'm.
Yeah, I, I know, but that's, that's probably the difference of the two thousand or.
Exactly, exactly. But I'm saying that when, when this was all discussed, well, Joe said that I, um he, he checked around and town clerks, new town clerks were making seventy dollars an hour. That, that's kind of, that's, it was a, he was looking at nineteen seventy numbers. Um the assistant town clerk in Castleton was making nineteen. I, I am asking for what I think is based on my experience, my knowledge of the town, not just as town clerk, but as Lister for eighteen years, as historian for thirty-some odd years. All of that goes into this job. All of that is, is information that people come to me for. And, you know, I am, I am worth more than uh thirty-seven thousand dollars.
You have to figure in your insurance isn't part of it too.
I do. I, I know that's there, but it's there for everybody else, Jay. It's there for everybody else.
But we ended up giving you the insurance for your husband?
Right, and Suzanne got insurance for her husband. Well, that's the way it was. I'm just asking for what I think is fair. I've, I think I've done a good job. I've had no complaints. No one has come into my office screaming at me. In fact, I have people, I have emails from people thanking me for going out of their way, for going out of my way to help them. I, I was helping Erin yesterday look up um road information. And, and not because I know road information, because I know history. And because I know where to look in the history of this town to find that information. You get somebody out the street, they're not gonna know that. No one in this town knows this town better than I do. And I think very few people would argue that point with me.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't argue that point. I don't, I just don't think, I think we told Suzanne that, that that wasn't going to be the salary, that she wasn't gonna continue at that salary. And I, I actually told her that it was a thirty thousand dollar a year job and she retired. And I, I, I don't mean to belittle the job and I don't, and I think you're doing a good job. I just don't think that it's reasonable to ask um almost, we are like, what? Ten thousand?
Ten, you're asking for ten thousand less than Suzanne ended up with? Something like that or twelve thousand probably?
Twelve.
Twelve, twelve thousand. I mean, you know, and, and she was here for thirty years.
And I was here with her for twelve of that.
Then at one point, you said last year that you needed her to come in and help you because you didn't.
She never came in to help you.
But you said that you needed her because you didn't know what you were doing. So now you're learning.
No, no.
That's what you said.
No, I, we could go back and listen. I said that she was a great help and she continues to, continue to be a great help for, for really several months. And in fact, I actually sent her a picture today and I said, you know, what do I do with this? Well, I talk to her very little, but anytime anyone goes into a new job, they get help from somebody else.
They don't get to start at the, at, at a, at that high rate.
I'm not asking to start at a high rate. I've got twelve years experience. And here's the other thing that I, I, and I kicked myself. I, no, I shot myself in the foot many a time because a lot of times they wouldn't raise the town, the assistant's pay, it would stay flat. And I would say to Suzanne, she'd say, I would give you, I'll give you the, the difference. And I'd say, no, no, don't raise my salary. I don't want you to go without your pay, without your time off. So after years, I was still making fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents and that's what I was paid for the first month that I was clerk until we got these things straightened out. I should have been making quite a bit more than that, but I refused to take a pay cut, a pay raise because I was trying to help out Suzanne. I was never paid a dime to be the assistant treasurer. Never got anything for that. You know, I, I donate a lot of my hours to this town in that office. I'm asking for what I think is fair and nothing more than what I think is fair. And I have hours, you know, you, it's not just the hours I spend here during the, during my time in, the daylight hours. There are times I'm in here on Sundays. There are times I'm in here. On the Fourth of July weekend, I had a call from um an undertaker, funeral director. I need help. I need four death certificates. There's a family that's grieving that needs to get a visa and we need to hit the ground running as soon as we can when the office opens. I was in here on Fourth of July weekend, filling out death certificates. I didn't have to. I could have said, Tuesday morning, you come in at eight o'clock and I'll meet you here. That's, that's because I love this town and I'm trying to be helpful. I didn't, he didn't give me a tip for doing that. I was in here the other night at seven-thirty because someone in town needed something notarized, works all day. Had gone to every bank. No bank would do it, would never meet him at night. So I was down here. These are the things that happen that nobody knows about. I go out on a weekend. I come in here to get my seal and notarized in someone's house over the weekend because they've got family and they have a witness and they want something done. It's not, this job is not an only a day job. There's a lot of times I'm going out in the town to help people that no one knows about. And I don't put on Facebook, hey, I've gone out to, I'm, I've gone out to notarize for somebody or I'm down here on Sunday of the Fourth of July weekend because it's just the right thing to do. And this undertaker said to me, I had a guy from, an undertaker in, in Connecticut said, there's no way in hell you're gonna find a town clerk to issue those certificates on a Sunday. He said, oh, I will. I'll get them done. And he did.
Other questions, comments? Let's keep going.
I, I do have a comment. You know, I, I think as we consider this, I, I think it's important to note that you know, the, the budgeted increase that we see so far, uh that, that's been requested is two, two and a half percent, which is um given the year and given kind of the, the economy, that's, it's a considerable increase. Uh I, I think by any business standard at this point, when a lot of businesses are saying, no, we can't do pay raises. I, you know, a five point six five percent increase is very considerable. And I, I think as we process this internally, we, we're gonna take that into consideration, but also we take into consideration that, you know, we, we do value the work that you're putting in. Or at least I, I, you know, I value the work that you're putting in. And unfortunately, pay raises are not a good way in business to say, hey, we value you because if that were the case, I would pay all of my employees beyond, well beyond what I could pay them in, in my day job. So I, I, I think wherever we end up on this, important to note that uh, you know, I, I think you're doing a, a good job for the town. But I, I wouldn't want the results to be.
I guess my, my, part of my thing, my, my argument is that last year, the pay was supposedly based on someone with no experience. And I came in with experience. So that's what I, that's the part that's missing from this chat.
When you ran for this office, you knew what it was gonna be. You knew that we had cut it to thirty-seven thousand dollars.
I, I get that, Jay.
You did, you did know that and you, you ran for the position and, and since you've run for the position, how many meetings have we had where you've been in and want more money, you want more money?
How many meetings have I been in? I have not been in any meetings when I asked for more money, Jay, not one. No.
Yes, yes, there was.
Jay, I was asking then for my money, not more money. I was asking that I got my money, not more.
The thing of it is, you ran for the, you ran for the position knowing what it was gonna pay. And, and you know, as Bob said, it's been, Suzanne was told, even if she'd have stayed here, she was gonna get thirty-seven thousand dollars. She was told that, so.
And uh well, let's, can we look at the fact that if I walked out of here and I was hit by a bus, who's gonna come in for what you're paying me? The treasurer this year went up eighty percent, eighty. And, and I'm, I have nothing against Tracy, but what Suzanne did every day for three thousand dollars was ten times what goes on now.
But she also paid for the school too.
No.
Yeah, she did.
And you ju- you dropped hers. Yeah, but she did, was that, she did the schools. That had nothing to do with the town and the school. They're two different things.
Right, she got paid from the school.
To do the school. She was, got paid from the town to do the town, three thousand dollars.
The, the point is, you could have, you could have had the treasurer's.
For three thousand dollars, I couldn't take it.
Oh, for, for the, for the money that is in there now, so.
Right, but I, you know, you keep saying you knew it was gonna be in there. And you said, oh, you can't raise anything. Once it's voted on, you cannot raise anything. That's what I heard several times. And I never asked for more money. I asked for the money that belonged to me.
It doesn't belong to you. It belongs to the town of Fairhaven.
No, it was, it was in my budget. It was my money.
It's the town of Fairhaven.
It was in my budget. It was my money.
Let's, let's move on. We're, we're repeating ourselves.
Yeah, we are. But what I'm saying is, I started at, at a point that was far less than if I had come in, if I had moved to town and had, had more experience and I had said, I'm coming in, I would be getting more money. It was based on someone with no experience. That's what I'm saying.
I have to disagree with you on that.
It would have been, anybody who won the position would have gotten that pay.
Yep.
So, that's the way it is.
Now looking at it, you should say, wow, we've got somebody who has experience and we really probably should wanna keep her. Because if something happens and she decides to take a job somewhere else, we're gonna be in big trouble. And I just wanna say, think that through too. It's, it's a hard job. And I, and I was hoping that by setting, kind of keeping you guys in the loops of the um uh election, you'd realize that this job is not easy. There's always a lot of moving parts, a lot of responsibility. There's two hundred and forty-one years, two hundred and forty-three years of, of books in that vault that I'm responsible for.
No one doubts it's a difficult job and no one doubts that it's you're doing a good job. It's just, that's what we're paying. And someplace between and actually, if, I think we've got figures here someplace that if, if there was a two and a half percent increase, you would be making the same kind of money that the, that the local clerks around here are making after a certain amount of years.
Now, I.
You can't take.
I think you're wrong on that. I think you should do a little research to find out. I, I really would appreciate you doing a little research, Bob, and finding out. I, I really would appreciate you doing a little research, Bob, and finding out.
I'm, I'm being told that the, the town clerk in Poltoni makes forty-three thousand. Uh, and the town clerk in Castleton makes forty-two thousand, and you make thirty-seven with one-year experience. We'll call it one.
I, I know you're calling it one, but when you got twelve years of doing it behind your, under your belt too, you've gotta count that for something, even if you count it for four years' experience, or five years' experience. It's, it's then up to about where Nedra is in Castleton, experience-wise.
Okay. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. We're not making a decision tonight, but we are, you, you've been heard. I, I don't, I disagree, I don't disagree that you have a tough job. I just think we have to be, we have to be prudent, and we will be somehow. We, we don't wanna lose you either. Anything else? Anything else in, in town clerk line?
Well, just my line, uh, the assistant town clerk?
Mm-hmm.
Um, for some reason, last year, that was lowered. It was five thousand dollars the year before. And when I left, well, when Suzanne gave, gave her notice, and, I don't know, I guess the assumption was I wouldn't be, no, I would no longer be assistant town clerk. I don't know. That was lowered, and I, I don't really know why that would have been lowered. Um, pay-wise, I have no clue where that, why you would, why, why when there was somebody new coming into office that needed to be trained, it would be lowered. But it was. Um, I was making fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, Sharon is my assistant. She is also a lister. Um, I certainly can't pay her sixteen, fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents. This year, she's making fifteen dollars. Next year, I will pay her seventeen dollars, because by July, January of twenty-four, um, minimum wage should be about fifteen dollars. She has many years' experience as a town, uh, lister. She is the chair of the board. About a third of the questions that come to my office are actually lister questions. So that's, that's based on.
But, but they get paid to be a lister?
Right, but no. If you're in the town clerk's office, about a third of my phone calls are, are lister-related.
I, I'm just confused. I'm confused as to where the blur is.
I'm sorry, the knowledge. I'm saying that the, the knowledge to work in the town clerk's office, the, the, the knowledge that you get from working in the lister's office is absolutely invaluable in the town clerk's office.
I don't doubt that.
Yeah, I mean, that's where that comes from. And in fact, um, uh, our district advisor says, if she loses a, a lister from, in one of the towns, the first person she goes to is the town clerk and says, will you take this job? Because they just mesh perfectly together. Well, then, just blend. They are almost a seamless transition in a lot of things.
I don't doubt that.
So, so you as a lister gets lister money, and as a town clerk gets town clerk money.
Right.
And, and kind of they go hand in hand.
Oh, they do. They overlap a, a tremendous amount.
A lot of times, you don't know which one you're going to today.
Exactly, yeah.
Given point during the day.
During the, during a point during the day, most of, everything, almost essentially everything. The stuff I do land-wise all ends up in the lister's.
Basically, we're figuring two pots of money here if it's coming into one.
No, because I don't do, I don't, well, I don't do lister work. Um, the lister, I do town clerk work, like, to record a deed, to record an instrument, a land transfer. All of that gets done and goes into the lister's office. Um, at that point, I will not do the beginning part of that process, because that's me too many times in that. I want someone to double-check that I haven't made a mistake, that the tax map number is correct, and I can't see that. So once it leaves, that stuff leaves my office, I won't touch it again until it goes farther down the track of processing, if that makes sense.
I understand that part, but you're still getting two monies.
Right, it's two different jobs. I'm just saying that if someone comes into the office, a lot of times, people will come in and say, um, oh, I, you know, I'm looking for, um, a tax map number, or can you tell me the, the, um, assessment on this property? Well, you know, I mean Suzanne could do that too. I'm not saying that, you know, as, as a town clerk, she didn't do that. She did. She just wasn't also a lister. It's just, it's just double knowledge. It's just more knowledge. And it helps anyone coming in, and that's what our job is. So that's why I bumped her up. I don't know any, I really don't know any assistant town clerks that really make, a lot of them make at least nineteen or twenty dollars an hour. It's just what it is.
How do you split the time?
I'm sorry, don't split time. What time?
Between lister and.
Me?
You and the, and the assistant.
Well, if she's working the lister's office, she's working the lister's office. Unless she's training with me, or is me, you know, if she's me, she's the town clerk. I'm a lister if I'm in that office, if I'm out on a site visit. A lot of times, I'm in on a weekend. Um, I'll spend a few hours on a Saturday or Sunday in the lister's office, at which point, I'm a lister.
And then you just, just put a time card in.
I just put a time sheet in when I was a lister.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I, I, there's, I, I don't spend half of my day in, in the clerk's office and then wander in and, and do a little something. I do come in most Monday mornings early, um, and do downloads, um, in the lister's office. And so you'll see me, you know, half an hour on a Monday morning going in to get downloads, so that everyone can get our tax bills.
Uh, any, any other highlights or anything you wanna?
I don't think so. Um, this year also, there was no money in my budget for any training, um, any meetings. Uh, and I'm already over budget. There are certain things that are required that I go to, that I had to pay for. Uh, I also have to take continuing education in order to keep my notary. I'm the only one in the office at the moment with a notary seal.
What are you gonna do for that? You don't have to do anything for that.
Yes, we do.
No, you don't. You can get a, you can get a notary seal for thirty-five dollars.
They changed the laws.
My, my daughter has to go to school.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they did change it.
They changed it.
Well, it used to be, you just go get it. It's more difficult now.
If you were a town.
Of course. Sorry. I, I take that back then.
No, if you were a town clerk, assistant town clerk, a justice of the peace, you could be a notary. And you just magically were a notary. You filled out the paperwork. Now, um, I don't think I, I don't have to pass a test, but if, if you just wanna be a notary, you have to pass the test. I just have to have continuing education, and I have to pay for the continuing education. I do not have to pay to be a notary. There's what you're, probably your confusion, Bob, is I don't have to pay the state to get my notary. But I have to pay to take the class.
I was a notary for a while, and it was a thirty-five dollar, I just gave him thirty-five bucks, and if I wanted to buy a seal, I could.
No.
If I didn't, I didn't have to have it.
They changed that just before COVID hit. Um, and then it kind of, it kind of, um, they kind of let it waver through. But this is the first year that I have to take it. I don't have to pass the test. I have to take a class, and the class isn't free.
Well, that should be.
Those are meetings that's gone up three hundred dollars.
Yeah, because it was thirty-five dollars. I had no, I had nothing in there. And probably over by, at, uh, the moment, probably about a hundred dollars in that. I had nothing to pull from. And the state doesn't look kindly when they tell you, you have to take something, and you don't. But the notary, I, I had to, I have to take that class. It's a two and a half hour webinar, or two hour webinar.
Do you know how much it cost?
It was twenty-five dollars. They were, the clerks were complaining that we have to pay for it, you know, the state should pay for it. Or the bar association should just offer it for free, but no, they're, they're not. And the, and the state isn't even offering any class. We have to pay the Vermont Bar Association for it.
That doesn't surprise me.
No, doesn't surprise me either. Yeah.
Well, it surprised me that you have to, have to have education to be notary. It never really was. Okay. I believe you. Anything else? Any other questions for the town clerk? The consideration, I think the, uh, we'll talk about the assistant salary and your salary. There'll be discussions until the middle of January. Right now.
I'm going too far.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, um.
Planning commission? So the, for the planning commission, I flat-funded that. There was no use out of that line, so I just gave them what they had last year.
Nobody knew that they could ask for money.
Yeah, that's funny.
They had no idea. So there's, how many people on the commission now? Seven?
Seven. I think it's seven.
So, if they all ask for a hundred bucks, which they're, they are due, you're short. The other one on that too is the secretarial services. You, you chopped five hundred off of that. She's, she's gonna eat that up.
I did, I cut five hundred out of that. Um, so over the last four years, the average for that line is seven hundred and eighty dollars annually. We have had more, uh, more permits come through in the recent months. Uh, but even with those additional permits, uh, last year's salary was fourteen hundred dollars from that line. So I didn't, it's not shorting her. It's just we had allocated more money than she was using. And if she goes over, I mean, if she has a couple extra meetings, you can always pull from it.
We're going, we're going, well, we're still doing a lot of, uh.
I will, uh, see if I can get a guesstimate of hours for everybody. I'm pretty sure she's gonna hit more than fifteen hundred dollars, but I could be wrong. Any other questions there? Municipal zoning?
Uh, muni zoning, no real change there. Uh, the zoning administrator got the two and a half percent, uh, like the clerk.
ZBA?
No changes to ZBA. That was flat-funded.
Just because Glenn isn't here, flat-funding.
Flat-funding a budget that is, uh, with an eight percent inflation is not flat-funded.
It is cutting. Uh, Glenn's not here to defend that, so I get one in on it. There you go. Okay, um, streetlights. Eight, seven.
So this is one I, uh, based on last year's usage, uh, was able to actually cut a little bit out of that. We were, we were over-budgeted, not, not overspent, but we over-budgeted. We weren't sure what the electricity use was gonna be like at the dog park and then down at the playground. Um, we had a little bit too much in there, so I cut three hundred out of it.
Are we gonna have to budget for park lights?
Good question.
Yeah, that, that's kinda.
It's, so they're, so they're, that's, well, that's the thing, right? That's what we did last year. We just wasn't, we weren't sure. So if they're LEDs, and we are gonna see credits coming in on the account, we should be fine for the budget. Um, if we're over a little bit, it shouldn't be by much. But my guiding principle is if we're over a little bit, I can live with that. If we expend a little bit more, I just don't wanna take people's money and not need it. So that's why I err on the side of.
Well, I agree with that. It makes sense. Nobody wants to give up their money.
No, but I just, with inflation and everything, oh, eight percent.
Have we, have, has anybody heard if, if Green Mountain Power's asking for a rate hike? I mean, that would be one indication. I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard.
I haven't, okay, you know?
No, I don't.
I haven't, I haven't heard it. Be nice to know that before we finalize the budget.
Seems though there was something last, uh, late summer on that, but then I haven't heard a thing since.
No.
So.
Well, let's keep it.
Transfer station.
How can the salary for two people of seventeen thousand dollars?
This is, this is the hardest thing we deal with, with the budget, and, and every year, we, we go through the, the conversation. I wish Rod was here, 'cause he would tell me, you're double-dipping, and I'll have to tell him, Rod, I'm not double-dipping. It's, it's what I do. So I handed out this sheet, which has the green, the green bars. This shows the total wages for all of our DPW workers. And that number is allocated by the percentage here on the side. This number is an average of the percent of labor used at each location.
The problem I have with, with the guys from the public works going up there, they're always there on weekends, so they're getting time and half-money. And they're there a lot on weekends. Why aren't our regular people there?
Uh, so in, at the transfer station, um, we are short-staffed by one person, which would be there. Jimmy.
We always had two people there. That's all we ever had.
I know, we're, we're down one person at the DP.
DPW.
Oh, DPW, but that's has, that's, we're talking transfer station.
Yeah, so this person would be that person, right? They would be the short-paid person to go do that. So Jimmy works at the transfer station, but he's not always there. 'Cause he works at, he works at the sewer plant.
You're paying very good money for, I mean, I mean, we can find two people working at a transfer station a lot less than what we've got right now.
Does mean we gotta hire another person. It just, well, I mean, I, I think there's, and I said this the other, the other day, there's an opportunity to figure the management of this, um, better. There really, I mean, the, the, it's, it's. Twenty-nine percent of the labor cost is at the, is at the, um, so we're really talking about a third of the labor costs at the transfer station. Just can't, can't.
Yeah. That can't be, can't be maintained. Uh, I don't know what the answer is, so I'm, I'm, I'm really serious about it. It's time to get creative. And I don't know, I have no idea how that is. I mean, I know, are we, are we on track to, to hire the Rust Belt back? Or in, in, at the end of July, or at the end of June, or when?
Did we get applicants?
Sure. So announced was the only thing that was posted, so I thought there was one candidate that was gonna be allowed.
So it's the same thing. You can't find decent help. I mean, help in general, just like, I mean, we're in the same.
But on the, on, and with the transfer station, though, you got guys, they're splitting their time between DPW and the transfer station. Am I correct?
All of them do.
All of them do.
And that's the problem, because they're all, they're all working overtime.
Would we benefit from hiring two people for a transfer station at transfer station rates somehow, if we can find them?
That's what this, this Rust Belt would, it would be the short-paid person to fill that. So you wouldn't have, like, the Nates or the Eds sitting out there, who are some of our highest-paid laborers. You'd have the low-paid guy.
And they're all, and they're all catching overtime. They're all catching overtime. So when Nate works there.
So when Nate works there, he's getting about thirty-eight dollars an hour.
On the overtime rate, not during where he lives at.
But if he's up there on a Saturday, it's overtime.
That is correct.
And I, I don't think, our, our union contract allows us to manage the people. So if you know you're gonna need somebody, then give somebody a day off during the week. I, I know you lose that labor. I get that. But there's, that's a possibility.
It is a possibility, but as Jay has come back every meeting, why didn't that get done? Why didn't that get done? Why didn't that get done?
I know, I know.
So, so I'm gonna pull, I'm gonna pull one more guy out, and I'm gonna sit here and just get pounded away.
We are not getting, we are not getting...
I know, I know.
The amount of work, we are not getting eight hours of work out of these guys any given day. If we get six, we're lucky.
I have to...
I'm sorry, but this, this...
These guys do so much.
This stuff right up there on Swamp Road, that should've been done in, in July. That should've been all taken care of. And you had your, you had your guys working every day. They went on a ten-hour day. It didn't make a bit of difference.
Jay, there is so much to do here, and we are so...
It's a pretty small town, Joe. We've got twenty-six miles of road here. Come on.
Well, just as long as there's a distribution and...
I don't wanna get into, I don't wanna get into a fight here. I, I want us to think of solutions. And that means be managers at some point in time.
I do have a solution.
There's only four guys that work at the highway department in Castleton. They've got ninety-eight miles of road they take care of. Four guys.
So, so there is a solution to this. If you'd like to cut that, that budget at the transfer station, you just whack Thursday. We no longer have Thursday hours.
That's one, that's an easy one.
That's an easy one. Boom, then you got two guys, you got an extra eight hours. You got sixteen.
And they're feeding out of their money of public works.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not gonna reduce your salary line. It's...
Well, it, it's gonna reduce the overtime if you did that, obviously. But, and that's, that's drastic, and that may be, that may be the, the answer, but it, it, to me, it sounds... I'd like to hear a little more about usage that day, that kind of thing like that. Everything should be on the table. Everything, and up to and including Jay's question of what we're getting out of the guys and how we're getting it. I know they're, I, I think they're working okay. I, I think they're, it's, it's a much better crew than it was four or five guys.
Did you have to drive by when they're doing the connection up here on South Main Street?
I did, yes.
Yeah. Four of them stood around the hall. No, three of them stood around the hall. One was in it, and Oliver said, "And they're bullshitting and smoking." Come on. There's somewhere they could've been doing something else. I can understand two guys having to be there.
That's two guys, yeah.
And that's what I mean. That's management stuff. And that's, at, at some point in time, we have to, we have to do that. There has to be management, and it's, sometimes you gotta be boss. But I'm willing to hear, I'm willing to listen to any proposal, up to and including not using. I, I don't know how much happens at the transfer station on Thursday.
What's, is Thursday a low day at, at the transfer station?
That's a low day.
Tuesday a low day, or is any, anybody got a...
Thursday's usually a low day. Depending, of course, on how holidays that, holidays can throw any day into a tizzy that is just unknown.
Would we benefit by another day of the week versus Tuesday and Thursday? Would we benefit by, like, a Wednesday and a Saturday, or... I mean, I'm asking questions. We gotta, Bob's right. We, we gotta get creative here. We really do.
The other discussion could be moving the hours around on two different days to cover them, or we'll get, we're gonna extend the hours on a Tuesday or something like that, and then if you're gonna cut your hours. So it's, how much level of service do you want is where it's at? Right now, it's twenty-four hours.
Yeah, I get that, I get that.
Twenty-four hours a week that two guys are there, so that's adding up to a good amount. Whereas, you know, the rest of it's all spread out. As Joe has the spreadsheet, that's one line. That needs twenty-four hours of two guys every week. Plus or minus whatever ti, plus whatever time it needs for the following day of cleaning everything up, making sure everything's ready for shipment, which is compacting every day, every other day afterwards, and make sure all the containers are taken care of. So there's hours in down there. For me, my thought and theory is if you're worried about subsidizing what the tax money is, make sure that thing's paying for itself. Make sure we're charging to cover this time, that those guys are there if you're worried about covering that salary money. Make the people that use the transfer station use the...
And I'm willing to listen to that, too. I'm willing to listen to that, but I'm also, I immediately, I immediately, you say things need to be cleaned up the next day. The first thing that comes to my mind is, there's two guys sitting, there's two guys sitting in the, in the tool shed all day, in the shed all day. They don't have to be out, in there all day. So maybe there's some, there's a, there's a possibility of getting, getting some work, some of that stuff ahead. I'm just, I'm not criticizing. I'm just trying to come up with a, with a...
Stuff we're working on.
I, and, you know, take your, you guys, you both gotta be managers. Sometimes you can't be their friends. And it's, it's very, it's, it's, I'm, I, I admire you for defending them. That's your job. You, you know it. I admire you for that. But at, at some point in time, we've gotta, we've gotta come up with, with a, I mean, this, that, that number there just flabbergasted me.
We're starting from the assumption that these guys are terrible.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
When I step into the room, it's like, you know what we don't get is work. And, and I just, I disagree with that. I, I've seen...
I think they're working good.
I've seen a strong...
They're, they're spread thin.
I think it's management.
Well, we, we had a, we had a nice conversation with the guys, Jay and Mr. Greeno and I, a couple of weeks ago, and I seen a change. And we were, we were doing well before, and then we dropped off, and now we're doing well again. But we are, we are short-staffed, and it, it doesn't help morale when these guys hear that when we step into this meeting, every week, every meeting, you know who doesn't work? DPW. They suck. And that's just not true.
Well, how do you feel, how do you think I feel every time you walk up and they're in the frigging store? They're in that store at least four times a day. Come on.
I, I agree with that.
There's no reason, there's no reason they don't bring their lunch with them. There's no reason that they can't plan ahead. You see them heading for the graduate nine o'clock break at twenty minutes to nine.
I don't, I don't believe that happens. I, I've tried to catch them at this, and I mean, they may be at the store just by chance, but they, we're working on an assumption that used to be. With the guys that were there, they would leave their job, drive down twenty minutes early, sit around for their break, have lunch, have another break, and then drive out and then go home. That's not how it works anymore.
Well, it's back to management.
Well, I, but you're starting from a position where there's this terrible thing where the guys are going to the barn and sitting around, having lunch, sitting around and going home.
So that's management.
I'm not...
That's not happening.
I'm not, I'm not there.
We're operating under the wrong assumptions.
I'm not there at all. I'm, I'm there, I'm at, I'm at that twenty-nine percent. It has nothing to do, that has nothing to do with their job performance. That's not what I'm, I'm, and I, I, I think it's just, it's a huge number.
It is.
It's a huge number, and it should, it should get you guys trying to figure out, and, and get those guys involved. I mean, get those guys involved. It, it... They're, they're employees of town. They have a certain amount of pride. Let them be involved in the solution. I don't wanna see, I don't want people to have to, you know, I don't want them to feel like we're pushing them into, uh, you know, whatever. And we're calling them lazy or any of that kind of stuff like that. What I want to know is how we can solve what seems to be a problem. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe there's no solution, but we should, that number should make us think that there's something going on, that we can do better. That's all. I mean, and, and it may end up being Thursday. I, I will tell you right now that I'll be looking for a house in Poltony if I should close down. So, so I'll be, I'll be on that, but I mean, we'll all be running on a rail, but I, I, people are pretty comfortable with three days. However, if that's one of the solutions, we're in a, we're in a budget constraint. If that's one of the solutions, that's one of the solutions. But it, it's just a matter of, and it, and whether I like it or not, it's you guys and your crew. They're the one, you guys are the ones that are gonna make the, the difference. It's not gonna be us. And, but we'll take the credit.
So if, if we did whack a Thursday, though, that's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna drop the budget. It will drop overtime.
Yeah.
It will reduce the, what's going in, uh, to overtime, and it will change that twenty-nine to, you know, you'll get more work in the summer, you'll get more work in the winter. You'll see that. It won't change the salaries is what I'm getting at.
No, 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 no. I know that, and, and I'm not, I just wanna make sure that, me personally, I'm speaking for myself, that, that, where we're spending our, what is it, twenty-eighty or eight or eighty-twenty, what's Rod's number, that it's going productively. And needless to say, when you see two guys sitting in the, in the, in the, the box, it doesn't seem productive.
Now, when they, when, when they're at the transfer station, you've got a guy at the window, a guy at the scale monitor there. And they pass information back and forth. Tell you to go, or you're okay to go, you're okay to come off the scale and whatever. Does that require two people right at that point all the time? Or could we configure something so that one guy could do it, and the other guy could be right in the area, but maybe taking care of some of this other stuff? So that they don't have to have so much time in the next day to, you follow what I'm trying to say? Uh, is that a possibility?
Something's already been worked on. The system's...
'Cause, 'cause here's, here's what I've been figuring here. You got Tuesday, so that means Wednesday morning, you got two guys back there getting cleaned up after the fact, getting ready for shipping. Saturday, that means Monday morning, you got two guys back there. Plus the loader goes down there. And Thursday, so you got two guys here on Friday. So it's not three days a week. It's six days a week, really, that you've got time being spent there.
But you shouldn't have to have two guys on there to, off days, cleaning up. You don't need two guys.
Well, the, the bottom, the bottom line is, it's not our job to manage your people. It's our job to question how the money's spent. And so it's your job, your guys' job, to manage the people. And frankly, to, to satisfy the board who represents the town. It's a simple process. It's not, and for us, it, it, we'll give, more than happy to give you helpful hints, as you can see. But it's not our job, and, and we don't know the job, but, but we can't, we can't, if we see, like, Jay's seeing things, he's, he's here a lot. And if he sees things, they can't be just explained away, "Well, that's only a one-time affair," or something like that. You see stuff. So this is, like I said last week, and I'm, and we're gonna, I'm gonna stop repeating myself, this is an opportunity. This, this twenty-nine percent is an opportunity. And I, I, I just think there's a way around it somehow, and the Roustabout will help. I, you know, the only, the only thing I would say is, if you've come up with a proposal, and it's the, the only thing you've come up with, the solution is quit Thursday, then you haven't done enough work. But...
Don't you, I, I, I have a, I have an issue with that, because you're cutting back on services for the taxpayers of the town of Fairhaven.
I mean, it would be my last-case solution, too.
They don't get a lot, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So that would be a last ditch, in my thinking, very, very last ditch. I'd like to see us try to figure out how we can make that more profitable, to reimburse us. Make it so that we can get more done, more efficiently there. Like have the extra guy there doing something else besides sitting both of them in the channy at all the same time.
You know, yeah.
Just simple things like that.
Well, the only other thing I don't understand when you go through the budget, these guys are working ten hours a day all summer, correct? Four days a week. Why did we use so much overtime? Why is the overtime almost used up?
On the budget sheet you have now, or?
The one that was in here. I guess it was last week's. I looked at it.
So up until, um, talking with Liz and I, or the time at this, all comp time was paid out of summer overtime line, regardless of where it was earned.
I don't believe in comp time. I don't think you're, you get paid, but they should be paid, paid when they're work. And that's why you don't get nothing done, because everybody's got so much comp time. And they're gone, everybody gets at least three weeks vacation here, at least three, most of them four.
That's a, that's a, a union...
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, on top of that, we've got guys that are getting two and three more weeks because of comp time.
Yeah, but you pay comp time and a little overtime, correct?
Right.
Yeah, but you pay it the same thing. They get an, they get an hour and a half for every hour they work overtime. It's overtime. We still gotta pay them when they're gone.
If it's overtime.
It's just, comp time, I think it's...
Comp time is paid in lieu of overtime, or in overtime, for you, it's just time off that we pay them out. We're just not here, so they don't, they don't earn their working salary that day. It pays out of the overtime line. And currently, all comp time is paid out of summer overtime, regardless if they work the transfer station overtime or winter overtime.
They should, if they pay...
So the potential could be more.
That number's screwed.
Yeah, it sounds like they're allocating it to Roustabout.
I suppose if they're paid only work and not have all this time off, you'd get more work done.
Yeah. Go ahead and try to fight that one. Well, you've been in those negotiations. You know how they are.
I don't feel comp time is a, a good way of using your money.
Well, then, we're not, but it's not something we can do about until the con, until the contract is up again, 'cause it's part of the contract. And I, I agree with you, although you'll get a, you'll get a good argument that it's, it's cheaper than overtime.
It's not. It's not, because you're not getting any work done.
Well, I know.
You're not getting, and then, and then one of the reasons we're in here all the time, because he doesn't have anybody helping him, because nobody's there, 'cause they're on vacation.
I, I mean, it's, it ain't gonna change for three years. That's for sure. But once again, how it's managed, when people get time off, and how you do that is, is in your, it's in your wheelhouse. Yours particularly, yours in general. And we will continue to ask, how did we get to twenty-nine percent? However, if you haven't said anything, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Hey, it's, it's a lot to kinda sort through. Even part of my line of question, questioning is essentially, how sustainable is the transfer station? So I've seen a lot more people with private bins out there. Are we going to see less people utilizing it? And have twenty-nine percent of work go into it? I, it's...
Yeah.
Is, do we have to, we have to reconfigure the transfer station in one way or another?
The other thing is, they should be checking permits more. A lot of people go in there and they don't even buy a permit. They go there every week. Nobody checks nothing up there. So, I mean, it's all, and that's money, that's income. And what is it? Twenty bucks, ten dollars this year?
Ten dollars for your sticker.
For your sticker. So, but a lot of people don't have stickers. We have people come out of New York State.
Come to think of it, I don't, I don't have a sticker. I forgot we had to buy it in July, right?
That's another thing that maybe we could clamp down on. You know, make sure they buy stickers.
Can we get a five-year trend on, uh, permits?
Yeah, that's easy. That's all in the budget.
The other, the other question that would be handy for this conversation is, where are we? We were close to breaking even a few years back.
We're, we're pretty close to breaking even.
It would be nice to know what that percentage, where we are. 'Cause that's all we, that's all we need to do is break even to, to justify it. But, it would be nice, it would be nice to be on the, the high side of that, but, but breaking even is the difference, the difference between business and, and government. You don't have to do anything but break even in government.
Maybe if your ten bucks is going on.
Good.
We were ten bucks short.
I, you know what, I, I, as soon as somebody said permits, I.
But I don't ever remember seeing anything out, even in the paper, about having to get permits in July.
No, cause we changed it, we want that eight, we, we ate, we ate the permit fee for, for six months.
Six months. But I mean, what I'm saying is, I didn't see anything advertised.
So that.
The sandwich board was in the.
That lost a little money also.
We, we advertised, you get the, we had the early bird special, where you pay seven instead of ten.
But not this year. In July?
You did have that again.
Oh, we have that every year. Since, like, the first year I was here, we started doing that.
I know, one year before I was involved, they had, one of the, it may have been Suzanne, was down there checking stickers, and selling them that day at the gate.
Don't ask this town clerk.
That was, no, that was, that wasn't Suzanne, that was, that was Beth, yeah.
Beth, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So you can buy stickers at the dump?
I know you can.
Yeah, we changed it, so that way they don't have to, so when you tell you, you need to buy a sticker, they can just.
You just give them a check.
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be there. No, I won't be there Saturday, I'll be hunting.
How about tomorrow here?
Maybe.
The first year I ran for select board, I, I got elected, and then I looked at my windshield, my sticker was two years old.
Yeah. Just a little embarrassed. We kinda got off track, and I apologize, that was me pontificating. Transfer station.
Other than first line, I think everything else is pretty close in order.
Yeah.
We saw, we saw a small increase on, uh, you know, mu- municipal waste and hauling and, uh, C and D, but that's contract price, right? Our contract went up, so we had to raise our, uh, our fees there, or our budget.
Are we getting anything for, for, uh, like washers and refrigerators, white?
No, we get a little bit for scrap, um, but not a ton. It's, our recycling is in the tanks, and it's been going down. Although I should ask.
Every time they pull a, every time they pull the metal bin, we get credit for that?
We do. It's six, six cents a pound.
What? It was a hundred and something dollars a ton.
That's, we're getting paid where I work. Metal, and that, that's, that's not even painted, white, scrap metal like that, that's just metal, 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 the, from the stuff we, we throw away, there. Six cents a pound. It's terrible, so you got.
Fifty-five cents the other day for aluminum.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised, we're, we're, we get a little less because we put cast, and we put, um, painted metal, and aluminum.
You're getting paid mixed, mixed material.
Yeah, mixed, mixed aluminum, mixed, but, but, our, our metal dumpster is metal, you know, it's steel. So. So it's not much, but, um, cardboard is still profitable.
No, everything's in the tanks.
We get, we get some money for cardboard, but I'll, I'll check on that. It's not separated, because we do zero sort, like we do here, so. Okay. Okay. Any other questions on, on so, on transfer?
I have, I have comments.
Go ahead, comment away.
Uh, so this, at the end of next year, in this, in the budget cycle we're working on now, we need to, um, re, redo our permit, your transfer station permit with the state. Uh, I reached up to, uh, a company and got just kind of ballpark number, they said about five thousand. So we will need to add five thousand to this budget, uh, to get our permit done. Yeah.
That's a state permit? Five thousand dollars?
Every ten years, we need to renew our permit to have the transfer station.
What do we have to do for that five thousand dollars, or is that just fees?
Uh, last year, Aldridge, uh, last year, uh, ten years ago, Aldridge and Elliot, uh, redid the permit, and it's a whole, uh, a whole packet full of, I don't know, all what, the materials we have, how we store them, our processes, procedures, um, safety standards, the whole, the whole nine yards. Plus the permit from the state. Yeah.
It's only money.
But, so, uh, I'll bring it up now, as I have a list of things for, uh, for the revenue discussion. But, it might be, uh, as we do, as we do the permit, it, I think it would be profitable, if the town opened up the transfer station to all the surrounding towns. I know right now, our rates are lower than surrounding, than our, our neighbors. Um, I think we'd pick off some of the, some of the residents that are close to our borders, and that should rough numbers tip us over into a positive revenue for that, for that piece of.
We get that.
Well, now we can sell them, uh.
You get it now, you, yeah, you, you get their garbage, but you don't get their fees, you don't get money for it.
Yeah.
They sneak in there and throw it away.
So, so the thought was to charge, uh, an outside resident, maybe double or time and a half of what resident, uh, res- fairytale, a resident would pay. Right, for punch cards and then for a sticker.
Did we raise West Haven this year?
That is also on the list of things we should do, so.
But we haven't raised them. They've had the same thing for years, the same amount of money.
Their rates should go up by, by.
Now, do they pay a lesser rate than Fairhaven?
They should go up by five thousand dollars.
What I'm saying is.
Yeah, at least.
They pay, if they come and dump the garbage, they have to buy a permit, like everybody else. They come and dump the garbage. But, West Ro- West Haven pays us to allow them to come in here.
Right, so they don't have to have their own.
They don't have to have their own landfill.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause they tried one time using bins.
Yeah.
And it didn't work.
And how much is that per year, do we know?
Yeah, we should be in here.
Down the revenue side.
Oh, yeah, right, 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 right.
I haven't got that in my bag.
I don't have the revenue either on me.
Well, that's something we should talk about.
Yeah, let's, during the revenue discussion, I had a couple of ideas I wanted to toss out to you guys, see what you thought.
Joe should go five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You guys got a new transfer station, right?
I know. Over in New York State, they don't even have a transfer station anymore. They've closed that one, right, totally down.
What, that one over?
The one in White Hall, the one in White Hall, I don't know about Granville.
Well, the other thing you have to be careful about is there are different solid waste districts. And, I, there may be some jurisdictional thing. So just, you have to check that out, because I, I, you know, if you're bleeding somebody out of Castle, for instance, they, they pay a lot more money to be in the, their solid wa- waste district than we do. So they may not, they may not look kindly on us stealing their customers.
But that's why we're getting so much stuff from White Hall, or New York State, because there's no transfer station there anymore.
They must go, they must have to go to Granville then.
Apparently, I'm not sure where they're supposed to go, but.
I bet, yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I.
Lots of people have their own dumpsters over there.
Hmm, and then, then, like, like Chad, Chad saying how much of that is.
That's an interesting question.
I mean, there's a lot of dumpsters here in this town, I'll tell you.
Oh, yeah.
Done done.
Seems like it's doubled at least in the last year.
I wonder why that would be, people just don't wanna go.
Don't wanna socialize at the dump? Kind of a good place.
I wish they'd get back in New York State. Pretty good ton of, or whatever it is.
You do, if you ask for it.
I've asked up there, and they say.
I've always gotten that.
They said the machine doesn't put one out anymore, that's what I'm told.
I got one just the other day.
They had to, they had to get a new printer, their printer.
I haven't had one in a bit, year and a half. Yeah, I'll start asking for it.
I'm pretty sure I got one.
Um, anything else to keep this, so we're somewhat on, on track, because we're not on track?
So to, to accommodate the permit, I was gonna add five thousand dollars into other purchase services, if that's okay with the board. Oh, maybe under licenses, that might be a better spot.
Yep.
We have no choice, do we?
No. I ju- I just got these numbers yesterday. I asked before I left and just got them, so, um, that's why it's a little late for this.
So, that line item would be fifty-five hundred?
It'd be fifty-two hundred. Fifty-two. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, fifty-five hundred. And it's gonna go up fifty-two hundred. Fifty-three hundred.
Yep. Oh, boy.
You say that's a ten-year permit?
Yes.
So maybe, we oughta start putting five hundred dollars a year in toward the permit, so you don't have to get it all at once. I mean, it's, you know, you figure ten years, five hundred dollars a year.
Well, it definitely helped.
Yeah.
When, when they raise the price, at least we'll be a little ahead of the game.
Right, yeah. I mean, this year we have no choice, but I mean, for next year's budget, I think it should be put in there, so you can start building something up.
The other, the other idea, when we get to the end of this, is that maybe we, we steal five thousand dollars of ARPA money, too. So.
We'll have to wait until we get the broken part, see what we've got.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a one-time thing, and it's, it's, and maybe we take, maybe we take the five thousand to pay for the, whatever, let's say it's five thousand. I would argue with those guys a little bit, see if we can get it down. But, and then maybe we take some and put it in as, as a, as a, um, reserve account. Like, you know, getting started.
You could divide that by, you could, you could divide that into an annual fee of five hundred dollars.
Right.
Be an annual, annual permit fee of five hundred bucks.
Maybe you do something, as we get going, maybe we, we designate the, the permit fees, the, the sticker fees.
To that.
To that, you know, once we get organized. So we're not killing the budget this year, but, you know, sticker fee, whatever they are, five bucks.
Ten bucks.
Ten bucks, everybody put their ten bucks in, and it goes towards the renewal.
Bet you only got fifty people here for a permit for ten dollars, and you got your five hundred dollars.
Right. Right. Ain't gonna happen this year, but it, it's something to think about. Anything else?
No, sir.
That's plenty.
That's more than we cost us.
Uh, okay. Baseball. How did you?
For, for baseball and for, uh, for rec as well, um, just flat funded those. I did add a two and a half percent, uh, salary increase, though we do not have a rec.
Have you advertised, or are you advertising, or are you?
Anybody I talked to, I, I know Jake was interested in, uh, uh, doing the baseball, but we were looking for somebody to kind of do the, the whole thing together, it was just, when Nicole was doing it, it was, it just went seamless, and it went, you know, very well. To have two people, I think it would be more of a challenge.
Why did, why did she do that?
She moved over to the Boys and Girls Club over in Castle.
Oh, okay.
She's in charge, that guy that came and talked to us the other, the other month, she took his job. So, she got a nice new job.
Good, good for her. I mean, she was, she was very good at what she did. I mean, everything, everything was organized, because anytime I ever took them somewhere, she was right on top of it, I mean, you know?
We were lucky to have her.
Yeah.
Recreation, same thing?
Uh, same thing, uh, yeah, honestly, I don't know why I put that hundred dollars in there. I went back to my notes, and I, I think maybe I just typed out that, but, so, there's a hundred dollars extra for salaries.
Well, if we're looking for somebody, a hundred dollars may help a little bit. Not exactly big money.
No. So I was, uh, asked about, by, by Nicole and others in the community, they've asked me, well, why don't we get a full-time rec director? And I said, full-time rec directors are expensive. But there seems to be, there seems to be a, a demand, though every time I bring this up, nobody comes in, uh, to talk about it. So they said they were all gonna come in today, and then nobody's here. But I did pull some numbers, I looked at the average salary for a rec director through VLCT, uh, pulled insurance, and then FICA-MED and all that. Uh, and you can have your own full-time rec director in Fairhaven, uh, for the low cost of seventy-three thousand dollars, uh, about annually.
Well.
Is it a dump? I don't see why none of them.
Yeah, well.
That's, that's their office.
It's, it's, it comes up almost yearly, and then, then reality strikes.
Yeah.
Seventy-three thousand dollars is, call it eighty thousand dollars is, is, four cents, five cents on it.
But then where are you gonna, where are you gonna have your recreation?
Well, that's the other thing, and they have to cut.
We don't have the schools anymore.
We don't have the school, we don't own the schools.
So you have, for winter time, you're kind of, that's well, you know.
Well, you buy St. Mary's.
Yeah. And that's another idea.
I'm just.
But, and then you have to put a roof on it, so.
At least.
Uh, this is something that I'm a big proponent of, and maybe not in this budget, but, you know, I, I think if we, if we're looking at, uh, providing services for youth, we, we've gotta offer more outside of the summertime. Do I think it can be done for less than seventy thousand? Absolutely. You know, I know that's kind of the going rate, but the other thing to consider is the revenues potential for a recreation department, cause oftentimes, there are, um, there's programming that kids can buy into, or families can buy into, to, to help offset the costs, so I, I think there's some potential there that we're, we're, we're not seeing right now. And I'd be, I'd be curious to look at, um, how other rec departments function, uh, in, in smaller communities. But I, I don't think it would be realistic to, again, find a baseball person, find a part-time summer person for rec, and expect everything to, um, uh, go as well as it did. I think we were pretty spoiled with Nicole. Having worked with the, she was working for the school, it lined up perfectly with her, uh, with her schedule. That's a hard person to find, and, and even then, we, you know, we probably could've, or should've put more into the, that program.
I think Bob should retire, so I think Bob would be an excellent.
There we go.
You've seen my organization. I'm not sure I'm. Does, uh, does surrounding towns have, uh, this program? Um, you know, Jones, Jones Rodenthal was, was a rec director.
Forever.
For, for Holtley. I think he did it for less than nothing.
I think, I think they have a full-time one in Castle.
Do they?
Think they voted.
They talked, they talked about it, but I don't know that they.
I don't know if it went in or not, but I know, I thought they did, of course, they got the advantage, because now they own that school again.
Yeah.
So they've got a place, yeah, six hundred thousand. But, you know, I mean, they do have the opportunity now to, to have something there, you know?
Yeah.
And then if you, I think they also can use the college, I think they can use that once in a while, but for us to do anything, you'd have to transport all the time, in the wintertime. for us to do anything, you'd have to transport all the time, in the wintertime, because you have no place to go, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
I think we're just have to start advertising. You know.
Hopefully you can find somebody that's in the same situation as Nicole, but, but it, we gotta get going, because baseball is not that far away.
It's coming. And basketball, meetings have already started.
Yeah.
There's nobody.
It's, it's we, I don't know.
We're, we're lucky to have the volunteers that we have. We're very lucky, and, and, you know, they're very dedicated, and they do, just like the concerts in the park, I mean, the amount of people that volunteer there is just, you know, it's great.
Which I'm going to move down to unless anybody's got anything else to say about recreation, except what we wish for. Uh, so special events?
We just flat funded that guy.
Yep. And memberships, you were up a thousand, right? Or down a thousand?
No, we're down a thousand, I, uh, I cut the thousand from Cedar Promotion.
They asked for that the other night.
Did you give it to them?
No, we said we were gonna, we said we were gonna talk about it.
Yeah, it's, uh, I thought of any, of any really one thing that could be removed that wouldn't really hurt us would be that thousand dollars. I liked what, uh, Lyle and Olivia Lyons were doing, they, they helped a couple of our businesses in town. But, I mean, what do you do, money's tight, you gotta cut, where you gotta cut.
I don't, I don't think we get that much out of it myself, but.
We get a visit every year.
So it's worth a thousand.
Wish there was a way to see how that marketing has impacted Fairhaven specifically.
It would scare you.
Barely.
To see how little that we've gotten.
We get promised every year, you know, and, and the, the organizations before Cedar were the, were exactly the same thing, and it's very difficult to pull those people out of it. The majority of their money comes from there, so you can understand that, but they don't. West of Birdseye does not see anything. Or very little. Memberships are pretty much, memberships. Your government, do, do we have any indication where? We never do.
We never do. I, I won't hear from them until late December, early January.
Yeah.
What is that anyways?
County tax.
Per population, correct?
County tax?
Yeah.
I don't know how they, it's
Population?
It's, or was it last year, a year before they
Per capita?
It, it went up because, uh, like, the state police wanted to put in a parking lot in a solar array, so we saw a huge increase, um, and then it kind of came back down, so I think it just depends on
Not state police, the deputy sheriff.
Yeah.
Rotten County.
Rotten County Sheriff.
So it, it seems to, it seems to bounce around about fifteen thousand dollars, give or take, I just, it's hit and miss with these guys.
We, we pay for the side judges, the deputy sheriff, or the sheriff's department. That's what the county tax is all about. And I think it's a, I think it is per capita, I don't, I don't know how they do it, I, I'm not sure.
Would that, would if they decided to do a dispatch in Rotten, is that gonna be part of the Rotten County?
I'm just wondering.
I don't know if it'd come out of that or not, or if they would somehow just charge it, it'd have to be a different fee, I don't know what their fee structure will be.
They haven't established that yet, that is one of the funding sources they're looking at.
But the deputy, or the sheriff's department was gonna take the contract, right?
It sounds like that, he's, he's the first of mine.
That's a real good question.
County Sheriff.
Because, I mean
Funding part is still up debate, up to debate as to where it's going. The easiest one for them to do is county tax.
Yeah.
Because, in my personal opinion, they don't wanna do the, like, work to fill out a formal contract, because
Yeah.
that there's a lot more work to do, so.
Well, yeah, and county taxes is there's no, there's no oversight. There's no oversight at all. The only people that, the only people that put the budget for the, are the two side judges. They
They budget.
They take what they need, and then they send us a bill. It's a simple, it's pretty simple. There's no, there's no elected official except the two side judges.
It sounds like it could be pretty crooked.
No.
Everybody laughs at the same time.
Well, let's just put it, one, one of the sheriffs, one of the sheriffs at one point had a, a few years ago, he had a, uh, car leasing business, and just so happens that the sheriff's department, cars, he, he won the budget every year. He won the bid every year.
Would it be?
No. Nothing here to see.
Should we ask, should you ask that question about?
Yeah, I could.
I mean, just, it, it, it might give us
It sounds like the first, first year's fund increase would be in place with the grants that the state is handing out for this venture at the moment, and maybe a subsidized, to break out after that, possibly, so.
But other than that, it will be through taxation in order to pay for it.
Possibly, yes.
So, it's, yeah, it's gonna be one way or the other, it's gonna be taxation, one, I mean, we're gonna get hammered.
Legislative body at large has a committee working right now, chip study the state's stuff on what's going on. If their recommendation comes back about regionalization, then that will, stuff will come to fruition. Otherwise, if the reg, if that committee says, hey, the state police has the buck, the balls in their court, they must continue to play, it could end up that way, but it's looking like
Nick, that the state police states are pushing their
It's all playing out as part of that committee's study as to what's going on, I guess.
That, that was, that was so, I mean, like a fire department. How does a person knocking in know where a street is, or, or how to get to it, or, or, you know? I thought when, when it was in Rotten, I thought it was pretty efficient, I thought, you know, but.
All right.
We're only here to hand out the money, that's all we're here for.
I'm, uh, we'll have more next week, and then we'll revisit it all.
Not next week, week after.
A week after, excuse me. Okay, things happening around town.
Okay, so, uh, the police, uh, they're announcing they'll be conducting a food drive for the holidays on Saturday, uh, the night, oh, eleven nineteen, and Sunday, eleven twenty, November nineteenth and November twentieth. The, the RPD is, uh, teaming up with Fairhaven Concerned over at Shaw's, so, if you wanna donate a little bit of food for the needy during the holidays, you can find, uh, our police department down there both days between nine and two P M.
Commission beside it and collect them.
Yeah, yes.
Now you eat too much.
Weird, none of the cookies made it. Uh, December seventeenth, we have live nativity here in the, uh, in the park. Uh, and January fifteenth, I'll probably bring this back up a couple of times, January fifteenth at Allegion at two P M, uh, we have an architectural, architectural historian.
You read it all?
Did I say that right? About the Red House, yeah, she's gonna come and speak about the Red House that was, uh, demoed, uh, to make way for Stewart's. So there's a little bit going on.
Okay. Any updates at all? I, I will tell you, uh, just 'cause I saw the zoning, we did some, we made some proposed changes in terms of, uh, well, the parking, we didn't do much with, there's, there is a couple changes, there'll be a couple, a couple more, and there'll be one that will rectify that somebody's notes were a little screwed up. We made the wrong, I don't wanna say who it is, but I know him well. One of the things we did was lower the lot size for commercial, and lower, and raise the coverage size for commercial. So
And raise some what?
The, the coverage, the building coverage, it, it was twenty percent of a twenty, twenty thousand square feet. We went down to sixty-five hundred, we're proposing to go down to sixty-five hundred square feet for any commercial site. So it has to be, no, you know, you have to be at least, and you could cover it with eighty percent of a building if you wanted to. So that, I, I think that's a good move, we, we, we scare a lot of people away with that big lot size. You know, minimum lot size was twenty thousand square feet. We did, uh, this'll all come in front of this board before, obviously before it's, uh, official. So there'll be a chance for you guys, for all of us to comment on it. Changed a little bit of the parking, like, we went in restaurants, we went from three, three parking places. I don't have it in front of me, I shouldn't say, but I, it, it wasn't, wasn't really substantial. We made one, one, as I said, we made one change that we will change back, because it's just
What about, what about, um, these people that are, have apartments, and they're digging up the front lawns and putting in parking, I thought that was against our regulations.
I think it is.
Because it's happened in about four spots, in one place, he took the sidewalk out.
Well, again.
They did, over here, over here on Green Street, or on, um, Grave Street.
Really?
Yeah, well, they can't do that.
They're not supposed to do that.
Just let
I mean, you know
Let Phil know.
They did the one up on South Side, they took the front lawn out and put parking in it.
I get so many complaints from folks now, they know that, that we're trying to clean the town up, and people who have their junk, and it, it just keeps coming, it's just the stuff, it just
I know, when I did my apartment, I had to have two parking places per apartment.
We didn't drink that.
That's gonna stay.
Yeah.
Because that's almost, everybody, I don't care if you just got a couple, you're gonna have two cars.
That's right.
You know?
It, the thing, yeah, the, there's an argument against that, that is a little bit, it it's not worth the argument, I don't think, I think two
I think two should stay, personally, I mean
The problem is, is we don't have, we don't enforce that, because downtown doesn't have parking. So anybody above downtown gets, gets to be scot-free on that.
Yeah, see, because we had to have, we had to show it in the guide on mine when I did your project.
Oh, yeah.
For the six cars.
Yeah, well, I, that didn't change.
No, I, good, because I don't think that should. It's just
The downtown gets a special designation because it is downtown, that's how it gets away with it, but.
Yeah, that's how we lost the free parking. Because all the apartments that went in over top of the stores, everybody got spots to let people park.
Shouldn't be, but it is. And, you know, when those apartments were put in, nobody had cars, and horses, and a barn down back. So that, I mean, pretty much the only regulations are, we're waiting, have you heard anything about that? You should hear soon, that there's there is a grant to be had that we should
No, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I haven't heard about the grant, no, but that was, we did apply for that.
Yeah. Anything else? Word around the table. Rich?
The only thing I, I have is where, where are we at with this property that we, we're thinking about selling, and if we've had any interest, and where are we at, on that, I mean?
Yeah, so Rich, I'm gonna be honest, I haven't had a lot of success moving that forward. Uh, I started to look at the deeds, and then it kind of petered out, so it's still on my plate of things to do, yes.
I was just wondering if we should maybe get a realtor involved in, in, in order promote this, if we wanna do it. And I think we wanna do it, I think we wanna generate as much income as we can with stuff that we don't need. But I, I don't know, it's, that's my thoughts.
Actually, no, you and I can reach out, see if somebody's interested.
Keep it moving.
And, uh, there was one other thing, but can't remember what it was right at the moment.
Well, we're gonna be here for a while.
I agree, so. Let's move on.
The only thing I've got is, I wanna know why we're using a part-time person so much in the police department. Now he's out doing ticket, or he's out doing highway safety in his paper today, and even the police officer at the high school doing highway safety. He weren't out a lot, but there's forms in there from Harley Field, a lot of them are in it.
Yeah, I saw he was in there, uh, let me ask, because we shouldn't, that wasn't the deal with him.
And I just feel that he uses Mark way, way too much. We got four full-time officers here. And, and he's always working through the daytime when everybody's here, I mean, I don't understand why, why we're using him so much. I, I, I'd like to see us put it down so he can't work over twenty hours a week, but I don't know if that's something to be done or not, but.
I mean, uh, let me see what's going on.
Yeah.
Because I know people was on the, on the highway.
Again, Bob, like Bob said, I'm around a lot, I probably see too much, that's the problem. And, you know.
Looks like they're gonna get you a notepad, but then it would just be more
It'd be worse, it would, it'd be worse. Oh, get one quick, when are they gonna shut the cemetery, I mean, the water's shut off at the cemetery now, correct? When are they gonna close it for the winter? Do they keep it there until snow comes?
Uh, snow or a frost.
Okay.
We can do no more.
Because I know I've had a couple people ask, because there's still a lot of people in and out
December first is kind of a hard stop date.
Okay.
If this snow sticks around and it's
There's a way out.
Yucky down there to drive around, then we might just close up early, but.
Yeah, I would, I would think you'd wanna close up if the snow came anyways, because people would be, you know, they'd be sliding off, running into the headstones or something, you know. But, but they asked, and I, the way I told them, I said, I thought as long as the weather was good, it'd be open.
Yeah, that's the general, uh, usually December first is
What the time, what the shut off, okay, that, okay, that's all I needed, that's all I got.
Is that, okay, I got a question. Can we put up the ice rink in early January this year?
Do you ever mind making just, just make some banks and pour water in between them?
Once the ground's frozen.
This
The sooner we put it out, the better, I think, because I have a feeling as soon as we put it out, the weather's gonna turn back to what it was.
Yeah, well, that's what happened last year. We live, we live in Virginia, that is true.
I might go put it up tonight, yeah, just to scare the stuff away.
I don't, I don't think you need the, I don't think you need the form, I think you just need some snowbanks and water.
That's how we used to do it the other end. Once we got the frost, you know, once there was a couple inches of frost in the ground.
That's what I grew up with out here.
Yeah, we just sprayed everything down there, well, of course, the gazebo's there now, so you can't do it, but I mean, that's where
That's where you are, there's plenty of room here. Oh, um.
I said a lot, uh, about some things that were on my mind already around the budget. I think if, if we're gonna advertise some land for sale, I, I think we also wanna kinda look at what. Again, going back to that marketing of our, of our town, can we, can we kind of pair that with amenities? You know, not only sell them the land, but the amenities as well, and it might, it might sell sooner. And another note, kinda going back to Cedar, um, I attended their open house of the Hub Co-Works in Rutland, uh, last night. Pretty remarkable space. If you're not familiar, essentially it's a co-working facility that spans the entire second floor of the old Opera House in Rutland. I mean, it, it, like, six, six buildings wide. And that really struck me as something that Fairhaven residents could potentially utilize. You know, if, if you hear of anyone needing like office space that we don't quite have, um, that, that might be a viable option for them. Uh, so something that, uh, something that we could, you know, potentially get, uh, either current residents or future residents kind of linked up with. As a space to work. Um, they're really pushing tech and, uh, um, and, and I T-based, uh. Jobs kind of going in there. Um, so it's, it's kind of a, a new, uh, new, uh, idea center, if you will, so. That was all I had.
One of the things, that's one of the ways Virgin's got their downtown going again too, is they did. The town actually paid the rent. They, they got a grant to pay the rent for some of the open buildings. And they just let people that had maybe an art gallery, maybe some little, little shop that they won. And let them go in there for a couple, into one of the buildings. For, and what happened was almost at every single instance. The people that went in there for free for a couple of months, took the building over and s, and made a viable business out of it. Downtown, downtown Virgin's is booming right now, so that's something we may wanna think about too. But I don't know what the money was that they used for grants.
But we really don't have any open.
I don't know if we have any open buildings at this point.
Corner one, isn't there something going in there too?
They had a.
Had paper up there. They had paper up there. No, I don't. Um, is that it?
That's it.
We talked about Scott Hill and that was the only thing I had. Anything we can do to paste that together this year? It's a mess.
Is there a chance of getting some state aid next year for that?
So. The state person I talked with to help out and get that line straightened out there, um, myself, I'm quite expressed concerns to him. That the class two paving grants did not seem to be very well handled. Um, and just to make sure that, that got noted up the chain, that there was some displeasure as to how monies have been doubled out over the last few years. And there seems to be a skew in where the monies go, so that hopefully will. Now, okay, just say, we want some money if we can fix that road.
You're talking to people about that, even if we get the state to help fund it, because they use that, they advertise that road for their state parks.
I gotta say, that's a driveway to their state park.
You know, I, I think they should be, I'm not saying they should do the whole thing, but I think they should kick money in toward it. You know, because of the fact that they do advertise that for their way and.
I, uh, one of the things that we probably oughta do in that, in that vein.
Write a letter.
Write a, write a, get a letter, put together a letter about that, give it to Canfield.
Let him take it up.
Let him take it up to the.
Can't hurt, I mean.
He's, he may, he may get a halfway decent committee assignment, cause he's been there for a hundred and fifty years.
Yeah.
But he's also in the wrong party, so. But he's there and, and he, he pressured and is taking credit for some of the twenty-two A improvement, so. Just will do a little song here.
He might have enough in, you know, to get something here.
It's worth asking.
Yeah. That's basically, that's basically the last road that's really bad in town, right? I mean, Sheldon needs a little help, but. But I mean, but that's the main one that's really the worst.
My thoughts are on. My thoughts are on these roads as if, uh, if we could do some, some more ditching and some more brushwork, mowing in particular. And then just try to get some, uh, T and L, what was, shimmin', like. And then I think we could get quite a lot more bang for our buck with that.
Yeah.
Alright.
Really good. Need a motion, General Fund, of seventy-eight thousand, five twenty-four, fifty-six.
Second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion for the payroll warrant of thirty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and nine cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Checkbook status? Yeah, uh, highlighted.
Highlighted.
Oh, checkbook status, two million, four hundred and seventy-two dollars, no, four million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-nine cents.
What are we paying, or where did we get it?
How many millions?
Uh, two million.
Two, two, four, seven, two, four, seven, six.
Two, four, seven, two, four, seven, six, six, nine, yeah. What do we, yeah, we just paid our school, alright?
I don't know, I wasn't here at the last meeting. Maybe.
Cause November tenth was when taxes would do right.
They, they had a question.
It came out last, last time, right?
I know that they, they had a question, yeah, they had a question about a, a large deposit that came in. And I thought it was for the sewer plant. But I don't know, if, if that reflects in the checkbook status.
It, it might've been. Yeah, cause they, finally, the, the feds have finally started giving us our money back.
That's what it was, that's what I thought.
So that's why that's two million dollars in the checkbook?
Yeah, but, so that number is always gonna be up in the millions now, um, before you just saw kind of what, what was. Rolling through the system. That, that number there now reflects every dollar that the town has, all of your reserve funds, emergency funds.
Why is it in the checkbook?
It's, it's. We had, so the, the young lady from Nemrick came in and she said, well, you want your board to see all of the money they have. And I said, of course you don't want them to see all the money you have. You want them to see how much money they can spend. And she said, nope. She says they should see all of the money and I really couldn't argue with it.
Why shouldn't it be broke down?
Right.
Our checkbook and then if they wanna show what there is in reserve funds and stuff like that, add another line item or something.
The reserve funds do have their own line item, but she, she mushed them all into that one big number.
I don't think, I don't think that's a proper, I, I don't think that's an accurate figure, because we can't spend that money.
That's what my argument was. It's like you can't spend that.
Not spend that, it, 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 well, you know, my fear of having all that money in one bucket.
Yeah, no, so.
I mean, I wouldn't, like I said, I wouldn't mind seeing a number for reserve funds and stuff.
Sure.
Other than, and then have your checkbook for just what's in the checkbook that we can pay bills with.
That, that was what I said, but, um, apparently I was overruled. Uh, I don't.
Well.
Overruled, overruled.
Overruled, overruled. Okay, do we have a, uh, attorney-client time?
We do.
Motion going to executive sanction for attorney-client communications. Number two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.